The hour being three o'clock, I will call this regular meeting of Innisfail Town Council to order. It's the eighth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. We have an agenda before us. Is there any additions or deletions?
Yes, your worship, I looked at the agenda in camera. Five points, three, I believe, no, sorry.
Okay.
Twelve point three, Code of Conduct Investigation, MGA, Section one ninety-seven-two, and Foyt, Section twenty-four-one, BI.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes wished? If not, would someone like to move we adopt?
Your worship, I would adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Consul Hill. All in favor? Carrie? First item on the agenda in the minutes of the regular council meeting of February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one for consideration. Would someone like to move we adopt those minutes as presented?
I'll move them, your worship.
Thank you, Consul Bates. Any errors or omissions to be noted? No, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Next item is the, are the minutes of the agenda and priorities meeting of March first, two thousand and twenty-one for consideration? Would someone like to move we adopt those as presented?
I'd so move your worship.
Thank you. Consul Harrison, any errors or omissions to be noted? Not? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Okay, moving on to administration, information item, CAO's report.
Thank you, worship. I will go a little bit into this report this week. So I did go through a couple engagements, as you can see on into my report. Just want to point to the one webinar I attended on February the twenty-third, the Alberta's Hydrogen Roadmap. That was presented through the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. Back in October twenty-twenty, the government announced its natural gas vision and strategy, which was part of their diversification of the Alberta's economy. This webinar outlined that hydrogen will create an energy transition economy in the immediate future globally. With Alberta being a spotlight with some potential economic benefits with with that energy source. Just some of the takeaways from the webinar included natural gas value chain target areas to include such items as petrochemical plastics, liquefied natural gas, hydrogen, and the Alberta industry energy demand. Other opportunities include Plastics Alliance of Alberta Partnership with Nathan Alberta and the Alberta Recycling Management Authority. It is noted that hydrogen produces no emissions besides water and heat. Hydrogen can be extracted from hydrocarbons and water. It can be an energy carrier and a feedstock for fuels. As we know, federal policy is moving to a net zero economy by two thousand and fifty, and the feds released its federal strategy in December two thousand and twenty. So just to point council a few really important policy documents. As stated in this report, there are sub-regional scale opportunities. And Alberta is currently exploring the following pathways for clean hydrogen in areas of heating, power generation, exports, and transportation. With transportation, as per the presenters, being likely the best initial pathway to demonstrate the value of hydrogen for Alberta. Of course, industrial feedstock and chemicals is noted that the roadmap to government is expected to be delivered into the spring. And there's currently no policy associated with with this energy. So I think it's really important just to highlight the Alberta economic transition and some of the focus areas that we'll likely hear more about in the now and into the future. Besides that, there's a few other engagements as noted in this report. If there's any questions from council?
No questions?
Your worship, but just one comment. I assume it's a typo. I think we'll be happy to have a net zero economy in two thousand and fifty, but I think it's net zero carbon, is it?
We won't have to worry about it.
No, I'm just, that's just some humor. Sorry, I didn't catch on. Everybody's too serious today.
That was in my notes. That must be not correct.
Could have a motion to accept the CAO's report.
I'd so move your worship.
Thank you, Consul Harrison. All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Next, we have the council action control plan. A report.
Your worship, I just have a question for CEO Becker. How how do we go about getting an action on the action control? Is it, we prepare a motion and bring it up? Is that?
Your worship, Consul Harrison, so administration action is geared on a few different things. One is council resolution. That's your primary way. That's really what this is, a resolution. Through a regular council meeting, you might get the one off through a committee or AMP meeting. But if council makes a motion, you'll you'll find it on this action item. We don't capture all budgetary actions that you've created through budgets. It's really what's formulated to council, council meeting.
Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah. Regional transit pilot program is done, right? That's, buses stopped running? Is that correct, Karen?
End of March, your worship.
Oh, it goes to the end of March?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was, I had a different date in mind. Okay. Okay, would someone, no further discussion, would we accept this plan for information?
I will so move.
Thank you, Consul Reberger. All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Next, Mr. CAO, the ECC verbal update.
Thank you, worship. Our ECC meetings are, we still meet every week. We find it necessary, just to touch base, even if it's for ten, fifteen minutes, to keep current on the restrictions and any news associated with with the pandemic. From what we talked about last week, the front-end staff here in the office are still on half the rotations. We did support library recently with a program risk assessments. Based on the new restrictions for for libraries, which they opened up really immediately. So we could go, the government announced step, we're going to step two, which means the benchmark to these restrictions was four hundred and fifty hospitalizations and declining. Step two is further restrictions for indoor fitness activities in libraries. As of March the sixth, there was two hundred and forty-seven hospitalized. So for a while within that four fifty, which if we can maintain that trend, it looks quite positive to move into to step three. And I'll leave it at that. If there's any further questions on more detail of the restrictions, let me see if we can answer your questions.
The potential for step three is, what, two more weeks?
Yes, your worship, to maintain under four, sorry, three hundred, we'll move into step three.
Now, if it's not at three hundred, we won't be going to step three?
Correct. So there has to be a trending down and under three hundred hospitalizations.
I personally, I don't think it's going to consistently be below three hundred until vaccinations are almost complete. It could be quite a while. If that, if they're going to stick hard to those numbers. Just my thoughts. Okay. Any other questions of the CAO? Not? Would someone like to move we accept his report as?
I'll move your worship.
Thank you. Consul Barclay, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Municipal enforcement objectives and year-to-date stats. Manager Leith.
The purpose of this is to provide an overview of objectives and related initiatives for the municipal enforcement for two thousand and twenty-one with year-to-date statistics. And recommended motion is to accept as information municipal enforcement's objectives for two thousand and twenty-one, including statistics to date. So the background, municipal enforcement within the town comes under fire and Protective Services Department. With Protective Services being supported by two community peace officers working forty hours a week based upon an eight-hour day, Monday to Friday. A flexible work schedule results in weekend coverage twice a month with proposed schedule changes from May long weekend to October first, which extends the working day to ten hours. And offsets the officers' work patterns with special event coverage part of that flexible work pattern. The officers provide education, prevention, enforcement of town bylaws with some provincial acts, which includes Animal Protection Act, Dangerous Dogs Act, Environmental Protection Act, Gaming, Liquor, and Cannabis Act, Betsy Trespass, Prevention of Youth Tobacco Use, Youth Act, Trespass to Premises Act, Tobacco Reduction Act, and Traffic Safety Act. So the three main objectives focus on collaboration with community stakeholders, creation and maintenance of safer driving culture, and back alley maintenance and standards. So the outcomes hopefully provide measurable data to enable review of effectiveness of these objectives to assist in meeting the community municipal enforcement needs and expectations. Service level impacts, enforcement's operational coverage throughout the summer would be increased by fifty percent. Boots on the ground. Currently, there's no financial impacts and the strategic plan alignment with safer community for citizens and groups and businesses. We did attach the the actual objectives themselves with the underlying initiatives. And your worship council, do you wish me to go through them? Or have you had time to? Yep.
Sure.
Okay. So objective one, maintain effective working relationships with partner agencies included, but not limited to RCMP, fire departments, town operations departments, CPA, rail, and school boards. These are underpinned by initiative one, carry out joint force operations for Traffic Safety Act defenses to a minimum of one every calendar month, and joint force operations are those with municipal enforcement and RCMP. Initiative two, provision of traffic control and incident safety supports within municipal boundaries for any emergency incident, including but not limited to motor vehicle collisions, emergency construction and maintenance, and fire. And to date, we've had one incident where that support's required. Initiative three, provide education, prevention, and enforcement for snow and ice removal from roadway, sidewalk, and back alleys. Provide education, prevention, and enforcement of potential trees, bushes, and other obstructions that may restrict or prevent operations from maintaining infrastructure or service contractors performing their role. We've had several warnings issued from January and February with one referral, so an order would have been issued for that referral. Initiative four, provide education, prevention, and enforcement to support CP rail in the maintenance and operation of CP rail right away. And again, there's two key dates for that, the September at the start of school term time and the May time when the the snow is clear and just as we move into the summer period. Initiative four, provide education, prevention patrols, and enforcement within the school zones. And yeah, this from January and February, we have had extensive number of patrols on a daily basis there and the use of the mobile speed units, issuing of positive tickets and also speed-related tickets in those areas. Objective two, to develop a safe speed culture based on posted side limits within the municipal boundaries. Initiative to, the initiative to support that, the education, prevention, and enforcement through active patrols and targeted joint force operations based upon statistical data from the mobile speed cameras and public complaints. To date, we've had ten tickets issued, six, seventeen warnings, and we've had fifteen operations to date from January and February. Initiative two, identify the number of playground zones within the municipality, assess current speed restrictions and signs based upon Alberta infrastructure guidance documents to ensure adherence to best practice. And there's the list of the playground zones currently we were able to identify and review their signage and obviously to ensure that we make sure that we'll provide and speed and monitor and active patrols in those areas. Initiative three, provide weekly education, prevention, enforcement for active patrols in the playground areas, ensuring that all town playground zone areas are done on a weekly basis. Initiative four, placement of fixed traffic speed signs on Lakewood Drive, Highway fifty-four, and Forty-Second Ave, southbound. And the need to evaluate additional fixed traffic speed signs if required. So just to expand on that, we we've just taken delivery of two fixed speed signs, which do have solar panels. So will require less maintenance with the intent of placing them on Lakewood Drive, just heading east prior to the entrance to Aspen. And the other one will be coming south from Penhold, just at the the car wash there. They're the initial two placements for them. The term fixed means that they will be there for and not move around initially. However, the opportunity is still to move them if we find that they're not being as effective as we would expect. And that's to supplement the two mobile signs that we were continuing to use right now. Initiative five, provision of education, prevention, and enforcement during MAD Week, which is September seventeenth to nineteenth in support of victims of impaired driving. So we're going to look to work with the RCMP to provide some active awareness of that campaign during that week. Objective three, a cleanup back alley initiative from June first to the thirtieth of July. And this is a removal of garbage, furniture, broken or defective appliances, and abandoned vehicles. Obviously, this is support just normal day-to-day operations as well for the municipal enforcement officers. Provision of education, prevention, and enforcement of plants, trees, and shrubs that have become overgrown and back alleys and causing obstructions preventing operations from maintaining back alleys or service providers carrying out those contract services. Again, a lot of these objectives and the initiatives overlap with each other on a normal day-to-day basis as well as seasonally. Moving on to our ticket and statistics from for January and February. So those graphs show pretty much what we've done in respect of the ticket volume. So our ticket volume is slightly up from last year. Again, as we move into March, February, and May. Sorry, move forward through March, April, and May, we'll see the impact really from what COVID had last year, really. But again, it's some positive figures and hopefully and certainly we're having an impact certainly on the traffic side of it. Let me move on to the next one, Vanessa. And again, these are actual operational files and warnings issued. So warnings, as an example, we've had a key focus on the school zones and crosswalks and parking at the crosswalks causing sightline issues and a risk to children crossing. So that's where we're issuing warnings and reminders to people. Any questions arising from that? I know it was fairly fast and furious.
I have actually just one comment I would like to make. Manager Leith is the back alley reports and and patrol. And it's about the only single issue I've heard had mentioned to me on more than one occasion. Some areas where the back alleys have gotten pretty bad and unfortunately, it's an ongoing battle, I know, but I think there's still maybe some room there to build on. The other question I have is is the COVID. Gary, can you, just how much impact has that had on our local municipal police? Like, how much time has it taken from their schedule?
In really, in relationship to their work schedule, it's it's varied. I think as we entered into the restrictions, they were the eyes and ears for public health, so to speak. And going to see what was happening within our community as we entered from non-masking to masking and those additional restrictions on occupancy, et cetera. We've had no cause to use them for enforcement. The only enforcement issue we've had was the the barber shop here. Yeah, it has increased their or expanded their workload more so than increased the workload, really.
Okay, any other questions or?
Well, one's an observation on your list of playgrounds. And I think Director Wyman could probably help me with this, but Pythian Park is not on there.
Okay, your worship through to Consul Reberger, thank you. We'll add that to the list.
Okay, then I agree with the mayor, the the back alleys. I'm glad to see this on the list. As you ride, as I ride my bike around in the summertime and take back alleys instead of front streets. Some of the beautiful places in the front are very messy in the back, so I'm glad to see that on there. And then another observation is the clearing of the sidewalks with the snow and stuff. We, in my neighborhood, the same offenders have been there for the fifteen years we've lived there. It's the same ones year after year. Maybe we need to do more than just warnings sometimes because it's the same ones over and over again. So it makes it hard to navigate the neighborhood when you've got a, usually it's easier to walk on the street than on their sidewalks. It doesn't seem right.
Any other question, Consul?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, through to Gary, our manager Leith. Do we, or does your, excuse me, CPOs, do they, do they connect with the resource officer in the school? And and the reason I ask gets, you know, it's plus eight out today, and I was by the school this afternoon and all these little little guys running around. And as the snow disappears, sometimes their thoughtfulness disappears and they get into, you know, playtime and particularly after school, before school. Is there any maybe just a message to the resource officer at school just to remind everybody that spring is here and be be a little more alert when you're on the sidewalks?
At the crosswalks? Yeah, your worship through to Consul Harrison. Yeah, we work very closely with Craig, the resource officer on a daily basis on some occasions. The targeted message, and we have had some recognition from the school principals of the presence that we've made, and that that is a key, and that's the crosswalk initiative is part of that. You know, the people are causing sightline issues for the children, and they're not always paying attention when they're crossing, they're on the phones, they're chatting with the friends and all those things. Or just run across in some occasions. So the positive tickets that were issued as well are to those children who are paying attention. And again, they provide that education piece to those who aren't paying attention when they utilize them across walks.
Great, good, thank you.
Your worship through to Manager Leith, I'm wondering, is there any coordination between you and our development team as in, you know, at MPC, we approve things and there's conditions to those approvals. Is there follow-up on that as far as somebody is not complying six months later, or?
Yeah, we do work, your worship, through to Consul Barclay. Yeah, we do work closely with the development officer again, rather than the development officer having to go out and be the eyes and ears, the the peace officers of that. And she she's quite mindful of reminding them what should be occurring in those areas, and they'll provide that feedback.
So would you have like a a schedule? So you you have, let's say, there's been ten approvals, and would you kind of schedule that through that we better go check on this six months from now or a year from now? Or or is it more so a complaint would come in?
Yeah, your worship through to Consul Barclay, it's more of complaint driven or on her draw-forward system where she knows she's had none of the permits cleared for that particular work activity. She'll prompt them to go out and carry out those inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Consul Bates?
Well, it's hard not to say something, so. Just one thing that I've noticed, it, nothing peculiar to Innisfail, but it's a pet peeve of mine since I've walked a lot more is the clouded windows on vehicles when you can't possibly see whether the driver's looking at you when you come to the corner. Are peace officers empowered to at least warn the, it doesn't seem to be enforced by the RCMP even. I know it's a law, but it, just curious what the status of that is.
Your worship through to Consul Bates, yes, it is, they are able to enforce that. Yes, there is some reticence to enforce it by both RCMP and sometimes the peace officers for the very same reasons that it's it's their risk is they're finding exposure to far more firearms nowadays. And when they're not able to make line-of-sight contact with the driver, it does, the traffic stops are their highest-risk engagements as such.
So is there a mechanism where they can even take the license plate and and then get somebody to contact the owner that says, hey, we got a little problem going here?
Yes, thanks, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, would someone like to move that we accept this enforcement objectives, statistics?
I'll move that, sorry, I'll move that, your worship.
Okay, thank you, Consul Bates. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Move on to the strategic planning policy, CEO Becker.
Your worship, I wonder if council would want to move into the community awards program. We have a couple of well-deserving recipients that are here, and you know, when mine, we could put over to Kane to lead the charge.
Be fine with me. Okay, and if no one has any objectives, we'll go to five point one now.
Think you need all the help you can get with a mask these days, right? So thank you very much for allowing allowing us back again, everybody, your worship, councilors. As mentioned last time, we are concluding our community awards presentations this week. We are going to be presenting four awards today. And yeah, we're pleased to do so. Again, we want to thank the Innisfail and District Chamber of Commerce for their help with this as well as the awards organizing committee and the nomination committee. They're an absolutely essential part in what we do with this program. Yeah, without further ado, we are going to do our first presentation this afternoon. This is for the two thousand and twenty Female Athlete of the Year Award. So this is a recognized, this recognizes a local female athlete that has demonstrated excellence in athletics, received recognition for their achievements, and they've competed at a local, regional, or provincial or national level. All right, and the winner for two thousand and twenty is Sarah Getty. So Sarah, do you mind coming up? And I can embarrass you a little bit up here. All right, so just gonna, yeah, like I said, embarrass her a little bit. So Sarah's done some amazing things and represented Innisfail on many stages. She's a natural athlete and accomplishments in many sports, but two in particular stand out, hockey and swimming. As a swimmer, Sarah has been Innisfail proud. She's been a major contributor to the Innisfail Dolphins swim team, and she's set new standards with the club. She holds club records in many distance categories, including the fifteen-hundred-meter freestyle, the eight-hundred-meter freestyle, and the individual medley. She's also been a big part of the recent successes of the swim club. Everybody's heard about this. They have been doing incredibly well lately, and she captured gold in the fifteen-hundred and eight-hundred meter provincial championships. She got to these levels with hard work, dedication, developing her abilities. And a really, really cool note too is she already poaching as part of the Dolphins, which is an amazing part of the swim team. As mentioned, Sarah's also set herself apart in hockey. She plays defense on some incredible teams. She's represented Innisfail and the region numerous times, including on the AAA Sutter Fund Chiefs team. She's represented the region on the Winter Games Zone team. And she's been also a part of the Alberta Challenge Cup, which really featured some of the best of the best in women's hockey for her age group. Recently, she played in Central Alberta Amazons in the Women's Junior Hockey League. And if we ever get back to that, maybe we can even play some games in Innisfail. But I guess the season was cut short this year. Her abilities don't end there, ladies and gentlemen. She played Babington at a provincial level on, for the Innisfail, for Innisfail High School. And she's also represented the region in Curling. She's currently a coach with the Innisfail Hurricanes Water Polo Team, in addition to her duties with the Dolphins. And of note, she is a valuable member of the team over at Innisfail Aquatic Center and has even won the Bates World Award for her distinguished service as a lifeguard. So this is not the first time that Sarah's won an award and I am sure it's not the last, but I'd like to present Sarah Getty with the 2020 Female Athlete of the Year Award. Well done. Yeah, that's what we were thinking is maybe if we can just move up here for photos and then we can have kind of some counselors in the background. And I know everything's awkward, you need directions for everything these days, right? It's really cool too, I love to do these little teasers, but so Sarah's not the first one in her family to accept this award. Her brother Josh and her sister Faith have also received Athlete of the Year Awards. So it's a bit of a family tradition with the Gettys. And cool, I'll tie that back in with Male Athlete of the Year in just a bit, but.
I guess thanks to my coaches and family members. I know that athletics has been a huge part of my life and has taught me many valuable life lessons that, and gave me lots of lifelong friends. So it's been a huge part of my life and yeah.
All right, just need to go grab our next award.
Well, let's, let's get another item done here if we can, then the strategic plan policy.
Thanks, your worship, council reviewed the strat plan policy last week at the Agenda and Priorities Committee meeting. So I won't go into much detail as you wish to. Purpose of the policy is to establish ongoing strat planning processes that translates the town's mission values into actionable items and measurable goals. The intent of the policy is for council and the organization to commit to strat planning framework as outlined within the purpose of the policy. The strategic plan will provide direction for long and short term decision making by council and management and make purposeful choices among, amongst competing demands for capital and operational resources. The strat plan is a primary mechanism to communicate to the public and employees and stakeholders of what council strategic focus is. Again, once the plan is developed, it is liquid, it's changed based on, on, on scan or policy or situation. As we know, the COVID really did a 180 on, on current plan, although we did achieve significant outcomes on the current plan. But situations like that can enter our organization and community and adjust our plan accordingly. So I'm asking council for considerations for adoption of the strat plan policy, which will give some, some strategic focus moving forward. With this council into the, into the next council.
Okay, is someone prepared to make a motion to that effect?
Your worship, I would make a motion that we accept the recommended motion of the strategic planning policy of 2021-002.
Thank you, Counselor Hill, discussion. I know we have never, we've never had an actual written policy.
We have not, your worship.
Till now. What, what was the driving force to require a written policy?
I think, your worship, previous council had discussion, I recall, that it's kind of fed into administration staff, really requesting a sense of purpose, I guess, vision of where the community is going. So it kind of took that from administrative side, but also saw the community is looking for really a strategic focus as well. What is the vision? So previous council took this framework, I'd say, and then moved into guiding the new council with, with the strat plan. That which we did in 2018 of January, January 2018. But previous council, they'd have a discussion on creating that level of vision and moving it forward just a little bit more strategically. Cause there's a competition on resources. As you know, there's a lot of things we could be doing or should we, should we be doing it? But we are limited on the resources to do all that kind of work. So a focus is required to making sure we're following align to meeting your expectations as well as the communities.
No further discussion? I'll ask the question, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. I guess we got time for one more. Okay. Mr. Becker, are you the lead on this urban hen program by law?
For sure, your worship, I can speak to this agenda item. Vanessa was instrumental in pulling all this information together for council's review here today. Also, all the, the previous meetings we've had and discussions regarding the urban hen pilot program. So we're asking council to at least consider first reading, means we're achieving the mark for you. Council may wish to entertain second and third greeting, if that's, if that's what you wish to do. So back in, we've had several conversations over, over the course of time over this council term. More recently, as of February the first 2021, there's a discussion at the AMP meeting. The council passed a resolution to direct administration to prepare bylaw outlining the guidelines for a two-year pilot program for keeping of the urban hens. And then to evaluate appropriateness of this activity within the town. So with the feedback council provided to administration, there were, was some adjustments to, to a draft bylaw, which is making up the program. Based on council's feedback, the direction today will certainly help us move forward to what your expectations are. Some of the highlights, and I wouldn't mind just combing through the, into the bylaw to highlight a few specific areas. But as per this RFD, the draft bylaw, and you'll see it again. The suggestions discussed by council recently about available licenses, a maximum of five households. Proof of approval from adjacent neighbors required. The coop dimensions are to be included in the applicant's site plan, fencing requirements. With, with specific standards, additional draft provisions to the bylaw include additional, annual license fee of $65. Program starts, again, based on your direction today, could start as early as May 1st, 2021. And of course, penalties associated with non-compliance of the bylaw. Also part of this RFD is the information that could be developed for an education documents. That would be modified accordingly to fit the town of Innisfail and the community regarding the town of Innisfail's pilot program. Keeping of the hens procedures and guidelines and coop requirements. So again, administrations recommend, recommending first reading. But again, you have that ability to move into second and the third greeting if you wish to do so. So just a comb through, please interrupt if you have any questions on specific areas. But the short title of this program, according to the bylaw, is the Urban Hen Pilot Program Bylaw. Associated legislation that applies to this program is the Municipal Government Act, as well as the Animal Health Act. And of course, Nineties Bylaw, anything to do with development to be associated with that, with that understanding and, and policy. I'm just moving into the second page under N, urban hen means a hen that is at least 16 weeks of age and kept for non-commercial purposes. So there is some reasoning for that based on what we learned on the health of the urban hen. Making sure that their health is, is first and foremost and a priority. Purpose again of this, this program is the urban hen pilot program is to regulate and control the keeping of urban hens in the town during a defined pilot program period. Under five, the length of the urban hen pilot program shall be two years effective May 1st, 2021, or changed accordingly, based on your direction. Participants must acknowledge that this is a pilot program as a trial, meaning that there may not be a program following the term of, of the pilot projects. Program, should the pilot program not result in, in the implementation of a formal municipal urban hen program. Participants will have 90 days from the end of the pilot to rehome their urban hens. It's under section six, a person may apply to keep a minimum of two and a maximum of four urban hens. With a little bit more detail by submitting a complete application on the form provided by the town, including a site plan, including the coop dimensions and identified setbacks. Proof of approval from neighbors having contiguous boundaries with property where the urban hens will be kept. And paying a license fee, as mentioned, $65. Under six D, there'll be a maximum of five urban hen licenses available during the pilot program. Under E, the manager may not issue or renew a license unless satisfied that the applicant is the owner of the property in which the urban hens will be kept. Or that the owner of the property has provided written consent. All pilot, pilot program guidelines and regulations are being complied with and the applicant has complied with all other provincial and federal regulations for the keeping of livestock. Under H, a person who keeps urban hens is required to take training, which is designed to provide adequate information regarding the successful keeping of hens in an urban area. Through a winter cycle and remain current with best manager practices of keeping hand keeping guidelines. Again, we had staff take this training and the advice is to make sure that the hands' health is first and foremost. Under seven, keeping of the urban hens, a person must keep urban hens. So provide each urban hen with at least four square feet of interior floor area, 10 square feet of outdoor enclosure with, with the coop. Ensure your rear yard shall be fully enclosed, sorry, enclosed with fencing at least six feet in height. Ensure that the coop is in a line of different setbacks and, and sizes therefore, for your consideration. Only one coop per property shall be permitted and each urban hen is, shall be maintained within the coop or coop run at all times. Page five, under Q, must obtain a PID or premises identification, under the premises identification regulation. In the Alberta Health Act, and that is something that's quite standard with other urban hen programs that exist in Alberta. No person who keeps urban hens shall sell eggs, manure, meats, et cetera, slaughter in any urban, urban hen on the property or within town boundaries. Now dispose of an urban hen except by delivering it to a farm, repertoire, vets or other operation. Is permitted to dispose of such and keep an urban hen in a cage, kennel, et cetera. The bylaw continues on to talk about penalties and enforcement and the authority of the manager. So it's there for council's consideration and question, if you have any questions, administration.
Discussion. Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, your worship through to CEO Becker. First again, I'll, I'll thank you for bringing this, this back. I think it's a very thorough document. I do have one question though, and it's on the height of the fence. And it's the wording, a minimum height of six feet. I would suggest that most of our fences in town are five feet. And if I want to have a coop, does that mean that now I have to take the five foot fence out and put up a, a six foot fence? Or like, well, the program will be dead in the water then if that's the.
Your worship, the Counselor Harrison, so the existing fence would not be considered part of the coop because you have to have setback off, off your property line. I'm not sure the reasoning Vanessa, you remember the minimum height, but it's a suggestion? Okay, so it could be lower? There's no regulatory. So, so it could be lower.
So when I build my coop, I need a fence six feet around it, is that, just so that we're clear, right? If I move off the 1.2 meters off the existing fence line and build my coop, the fence around the coop would be six feet? No?
Let's take a, let's take a look at that section.
Yeah. Yeah, there it is. Fully enclosed with fencing.
So that'd be number seven.
Seven, two.
Ensure rear yard shall be fully enclosed with a fencing at least six. Oh, sorry, this is, so this is the actual fence, not, sorry, the, sorry, Counselor Harrison. So I guess part of it, I think, from Vanessa's comments is, is ready to maintain shelter and to prevent any predators within the yard. So it can be adjusted based on this bylaw. It is only a suggestion to, to create less visible and availability to, to the coop.
So just a further question then, so when you apply for your, your license and when you do your schematic drawings, you would note that I have a five foot fence? And then whoever inspects the manager would then say, yep, that, that looks good enough at five feet, is that, with that?
Your worship, Counselor Harrison, no, not according to this bylaw. You need a six foot fence.
Well, I, I, I disagree with that. Because like I say, I'll go back to probably 90% of our fences in town are all, all five feet, particularly adjoining properties. So, you know, we talk about putting a trial program, but I, I would see that this, this requirement might restrict the program completely. So I, I, you know, I can't agree, I can agree with a five foot or an existing fence upon inspection. But it's, it's the wording of a minimum of six feet, so that would be my comment, so, thank you.
Is this something, Vanessa, that you?
Is this something Vanessa that you? Picked up on doing the research on it from other policies and such throughout the province or the country or wherever.
The fencing?
Yeah.
It was actually a suggestion from council last time to add that. And I just put the six feet because that's what I heard from the hen course, but it could be amended.
Okay.
Your worship. I I think I believe hearing the six foot mark was was discussed at some point in time. I could be corrected, but. I think it was to just add an extra level of a screening or privacy for others to to make sure that it wouldn't be impacting to the sight lines of. Of neighbors potentially, you know, maybe not adjacent to you, but if you share back alley or something like that, I I think that's. More of a visual screen as well as protection of the of the coop itself, but. That's I'm just trying to come off of what I remember hearing from discussions. But I would be open to further dialogue with this topic.
Your worship through to CEO Becker, um, questions I have. What is defined as a neighbor? Is it a neighbor on each side? What if you share a back fence with neighbors? Is it the neighbor right behind you? Is it the two beside that person? Like, how wide does the the neighbor go and? Is it up to the person getting the license to have to get that permission from the neighbor or? Is it the town that would be sending a letter out asking for permission? Because I I think it'd be hard. Right? If you have somebody show up and oh, I want to put chickens in and you're not really in favor. It's hard to say no to that person to their. Understanding in front of you. So. Do we know how that would work?
I was always of the. Understanding of the feeling was that the. Applicant would have to get notes from the neighbors saying they didn't have any objection to it. That's the way I understood it.
That would follow your line with administrations, understanding concept vertically is that. The goodwill neighbors will be able to provide that communication because they'll need to communicate regardless with that program. Possibly. So that'd be administrative process would be have to have the neighbor provide that information through. Led by the the applicants.
Okay, I just think it might be difficult in in some instances for somebody to say no. To to the neighbor, even though maybe they don't want something. You know, you might cause some division there where if the person is applying and they're having to get the neighbors have to get permission and it's a town. Getting the permission and somebody says no, that person doesn't know which person said no, they they know somebody said no, but. You know, as opposed to to face to face. Anyway, that's one point. I also noticed in the the city of Edmonton documents that you have. There was mentor training provided during the first year of licensing on. I see out of the Edmonton information, there was a third of the pilot project applicants had complaints about them, some of them multiple complaints and. And I I guess I'm wondering, I I would like to see this tightened up a little bit that, you know. Is there somebody around that can be a mentor to to people doing this? Because it's not just a matter of getting a couple of hands and away we go. Waste control is something that concerns me and making sure maybe that's. Laid out a little bit clearer in the bylaw as well as. The, I guess inspections as well. I see the city of Edmonton, they were doing inspections along the way. So can we? Implement that into this bylaw where there would be inspections once somebody is licensed. That they're not just left. I I guess I. I see this sometimes throughout town, right? Like I said, MPC, we approve something and then a year later. Things aren't being done the way they were supposed to be done and it kind of comes back on the town and council and. And so I I I certainly don't mind this program. I think people know that, but I I want it to be tight where we're not creating issues and in the community with. You know, the the complaints for smell and rodents. Out of Edmonton and and how do we tighten this up so that we can avoid some of this stuff?
Worship the council Barclays on on just on the backyard one first. So although not defined in the bylaw, but adjacent properties would be considered the neighbors. So it could be on either side or backyard. If you're sharing a fence, it's not defined to that, but. That's what would be considered. I I would would believe just some procedure. So. Communities really wanting the urban and pilot program or want to put that back to to the citizens. That's why it's required for them to be certified to to have urban hens. All the points that you made are really outlined within within that training. I think there is opportunity to to inspect. So application come in and inspect on the initial. And and based on capacity. Whether it's sidewalks or trees. You know, it'll be on a. Yeah, based on demand or requirements and potentially stop in, but it could be scheduled as well, but. It's really based on or complaint based on capacity likely, but. My recommendation is those that want urban hen would fit the bill of the byline and 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 follow what's they've been trained to do.
Well, your worship through to CEO Becker, I appreciate that, but I I'm just looking at the information that came out of Edmonton and same thing, right? People were were chosen. I think there was nineteen licenses out of forty five applicants that were chosen for the pilot project. And yet a third of those didn't follow. So how can we tighten our end up?
I think your counselor, uh, three council Berkeley is is public education. But it's an annual license as well. So those that do not want to comply with the bylaw will 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 receive fine. That's with any bylaw. So. And then maybe a license would not be revoked. I think there's some wording in there that the manager has a right to not. Renew a license or it can revoke the license, but that is part of enforcement. It's it's not all education enforcement does need to apply in some certain circumstance. Again, I don't want to be doing a debate with you, council Berkeley, certainly can tighten up with through policy. We need to council desire is to tighten up on procedure and policy. We can develop policy to to line itself up with this bylaw. That's what council's desire is.
Costa Beach. So for my comments. I think you presented a very complete bylaw, subject to discussion about maybe a fence height. That's fine. One question I do have and I. I guess based on any input I've had from citizens over the last, this has gone on a few years. Is is satisfied, I think, to a great extent by. Making sure that you have permission from your neighbor. So that that's important. One question, though, that that caused me to think about in, you know, to make sure we weren't penalizing somebody unfairly. Is if a person has an existing coop now. And. One of the neighbors that. Consent it to it, sold his property. The next incoming person would not have the veto power to say, you got to get rid of it. You're buying what you see. So I'm just bringing that up for.
I'm just wondering if we're a little premature on this. Do we want to leave this for? Further discussion or?
Well, I, one of the criticisms that I've had is that we spend too much time on this, so.
Well, I know.
I personally think what what's here is pretty good. But.
So your worship, just to answer the question, administratively, we talked about that possibility and likelihood. That's somebody's gonna make a significant investment. So if they've had permission to have the coop. It's going to be existing development, so to speak. So if you move in beside it, you need to become familiar, do your due diligence on what what your neighbor. You know, so it would be maintained. If they follow the bylaw.
Thank you. That's what I would assume. Thank you.
Castle Reaper. So I I think the. I think this is good. Is it the way it's written? I don't have. I don't think I have any issues with it. Other than if the fence height is a. Is a five or six feet, I don't think is a big. Hurdle for me. Most of the older neighborhoods would have probably six foot fences. Maybe the newer ones would be more in the five foot range. I agree with council Bates. I I haven't had many people or I have had nobody tell me they want chickens, but this would. The way this is written with the neighborhood consent or the neighbors consent and everything, I don't have a any problem going ahead with this pilot project.
So with the comments, council is is there a requirement for more detail and procedure policy?
Yeah, I think so. But do we have first, you you moved. We haven't moved yet. Okay.
You worship, I guess the only change I I would really like to see is that the neighbor thing, like whether the applicant comes and. Does what they do and then the town sends a letter out to the two neighbors as opposed to kind of taking that personal face to face side of it.
So is that do we require a change in the bylaw then?
Yeah, I think so. Your worship, instead of creating a procedure with. With with that, I think we could put some wording in the bylaw just so it's there. So it's continual. So if you're. You can make first reading perhaps, and then we can bring it back and final review, or you can then trust that the wording would be. Inclusive of wording associated that the town will. Request. Permission from adjacent neighbors on as for the applicants.
Or even your worship, can that just be part of your procedure CEO Becker, like within the town? Doesn't necessarily, does it have to be part of this or can it just be a procedural thing that that you're doing and and maybe there's? I mean, there's probably lots of neighbors that that you know, it'll be fine. I'm just thinking there may be some that. You know, not everybody knows their neighbors and might be kind of an intimidation factor. Who knows, right? So.
What it suggests council Berkeley through your worship through application form. We can make note of of that as a procedure.
Okay. Someone prepared to make a motion and give this first reading or no?
Your worship, I would grant first reading of this bylaw.
Okay, thank you, councilor Hill. Any further discussion?
So excuse me, worship type of question. And so what what? What about the fence height? Is that an issue or is that would be? It was raised. I don't think we, so is the motion with the six foot fence? Because that was the only other question I think I heard. I'm not hung up on it personally.
Your worship through to CEO Becker, I I on an existing fence that's five feet tall, I think it is because. You've got three properties, you're sharing. Three, three fences, they're all five feet. Now, does that mean that I gotta go and? I get permission to have chickens. Now I gotta take three fences out and put up another foot to satisfy this. So I think, yeah, it it is an issue. I don't.
I just want to know what I'm voting on.
You know, could we soften the wording in there a little bit rather than a minimum height? Of six feet?
What are you suggesting, council Harrison for wording?
If we can bring it up, I'll have to.
Can you go to the section? Page four.
Fully enclosed with fencing. With fencing to six feet in height, take out at least. No. Then how do we capture the existing fences five feet? That's what I'm trying to do. So I don't have to take my fence out. Is everybody okay with that?
Just move it to five feet.
Your worship, I would be agreeable to amending my motion to and and state it to be five feet.
At least five feet.
So in your worship through to CEO Becker, the the height of the coop is what six and a half? Is that what I saw someplace? Vanessa knows the top of her head.
I think we're there, Vanessa, right? No more than two meters. In height.
So six and a half feet. Yep. Okay.
Higher than six and a half feet. You might have a five foot fence and you can have your coop be sticking up six and a half feet. Okay, and if for a friendly amendment, then if that's okay, we reduce that from six to five. Okay, any further discussion then? All in favor of the motion? Carried unanimously. Do you want to proceed to second and third today or you want to give it a little? We have that option. Get her done. Ah, somebody prepared to make a motion that we give this second reading for consideration.
That's so moves that we moved or go to second reading.
Okay, thank you, councilor Harrison. Discussion. All in favor of the motion. Carried. Well, would someone like to move that we give? Proceed to third and final reading. We need a motion to proceed to third.
Before I do that, is there any discussion amongst us that there's a reason that we would want to? Any further consultation as?
Well. I mean, we can certainly amend the the bylaw, council Bates, too, if there's something, you know, that we're having an issue with or. You know, in the setup process or whatever. Maybe something that.
Okay, well, I will make the motion that we. Proceed to.
Third.
The third reading, not give it, that's the next.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion carried. And would someone like to move? We give this third and final. I'll move that we give it third and final reading. Thank you, council Reber. There will be no discussion. All in favor of the motion. Carried. Thank you. And I I think that's that's a point that we, I mean, we can amend this. In the setting up process, if there's some hurdles that. Staff come up with or, you know, in the application process and we'll revisit it. Okay, thank you. We want to go. Oh, okay. Thinking chickens here.
All right, there we go. That's just the usual council meeting right on. Okay, so thank you very much for allowing me a little time in between. We've got everything, I think, lined up now. So the next award that we will be presenting is our twenty twenty leaders of tomorrow award. This is for a student enrolled in full time studies who resides within the Innisville area. Provides outstanding contribution of their call or to their community through volunteerism and inspires others to give back to the community. So I will introduce the winner of the twenty twenty leaders of tomorrow award and that is. All right, so I need to let you guys know a little bit about Sam. I promise I'd embarrass her a little bit. All right, so she's an exceptional young person and leader in our community. Her is impact is is fantastic in Innisville. She's, you know, she's an excellent volunteer. Because Sam is a vital part of the youth action committee, which is a group, as you might know, is supported by the town of Innisville. McMahon, I are the Innisville High School, the Chinook Head School Division. And yeah, we we work together to try and give youth and young adults a greater sense of belonging in the community. She's been very active with with Yak, with the YAC, since its inception just over a year ago. And through some of the biggest challenges that we faced, which is the pandemic, when nobody can go to into the schools except for the students these days. And you're very restricted in what you can do for programming, but Sam has been such a huge part of continuing the important work that we've been doing. She's been crucial in lighting, building and stroking the fire for Yak. She's also a willing in-person volunteer. She's also a willing in person volunteer. She volunteered at the Halloween Haunt just a little while ago, and she's been part of other. Things like Registration Night. You're actually featured in a leading role almost in the Halloween Haunt, kind of part of the finale there. Princess Samantha, I think formally. But yeah, it was it was incredible. And she's always enthusiastic with these projects, readily volunteering her time and giving it her all. Another thing that really want to let you guys know about is that Sam's an exemplary exemplary leader. As an advocate for mental health, and this is on a provincial scale and beyond. Recently, she her story was recognized and shared by a Calgary based mental health initiative called Project Nightlife YY or Project Nightlight YYC. This project helps tell the stories of people with mental health struggles to reduce stigmas and help others know that you are not alone. She made her her story public through this project, and the reaction was incredible. It was heartfelt and touching. And it's clear that people connected with her honesty and bravery. Currently, currently, she's working in other ways to reduce stigma and encourage discussions surrounding mental health break here in Innisfail. So she is a deserving winner for the Leaders of Tomorrow Award. She is an amazing leader today, especially for a difficult year like 2020. She's talented, flexible, strong, and brave, and she's a leader who is ready to show her abilities with the community. So. Very pleased to recognize Samantha Olson as our 2020 Leader of Tomorrow.
Yeah, so um, this is like this means so much to me and I like, thank you all. I'm really glad to have been able to find us like spot in the community by volunteering and stuff. And same with like sharing my story. I'm just glad to have done something and to be doing something and it means so much to me to be recognized for it.
All right. So our next award winner will not be able to join us in person. We will have him join us via Zoom. He is our 2020 Male Athlete of the Year Award winner. And just to let you guys know, this is a local male athlete who has demonstrated excellence in athletics, received recognition for their achievements. And competed at a local, regional, provincial, or national level. So I'd like to present you guys, the winner of the 2020 Male Athlete of the Year Award is Kyle Baumgart. Kyle, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Awesome. I love the audio in here. It just comes right through. It's fantastic. All right. So just to let you guys know a little bit about Kyle, he's a promising ball player who has made our community proud on multiple stages. He's a product of the Innisfail Minor Ball System. Kyle spent years developing with the Innisfail Indians Ball Team. He played from Mesquite right up to Bantam. And although Kyle specializes in baseball, it's worth noting that he played minor hockey and even some minor lacrosse in Innisfail from a young age. So like I say, he played a lot of minor ball in Innisfail after his first year after his first year of Bantam Ball, Kyle joined the Red Deer AAA Braves. And from there, he spent time in Midget with the Calgary Junior Dinos team. And that was actually, they competed for the Western Canadian Championship in 2017. A decorated player who has played multiple positions, Kyle has spent time at third base and as an outfielder, but usually, but it always comes back to pitching. So. He has been named MVP on multiple teams, then he played in Innisfail and Red Deer, and he also was. Sorry, recognized with an amazing accomplishment, the most improved player on his juniors dynos team in 2017. Kyle has been part of some exceptional teams. He won provincial championships in Peewee multiple times for Innisfail. And also a team that was named the 2014 Team of the Year. He also played on the Alberta Summer Games team. And was part of the Innisfail Merchants team that competed for the 2019 Canadian Baseball Championships. So a shout out to the merchants. Also in 2020, Kyle started playing for the local Innisfail Trappers, but their season was cut a little bit short again to the pandemic. But currently, and this is where he's coming from right now, is Kyle is part of the Columbia Basin College Hawks. Which is located in Pasco in the state of Washington as he continues his career. So can we give a round of applause for Kyle? All right, Kyle, it's it's up to you if you want to if you want to say a few words.
Yeah, for sure. I just wanted to thank everybody, especially coaches, family and friends. For helping me through. Baseball and just sports in general. I would really like to thank my dad, Kent. Corbin Shields, Brett Littlefair, and Brant Stickell for really helping me out.
Right on. And as kind of mentioned earlier, it's a little bit of a family tradition with the Baumgart family. Kyle's actually the third winner of the Athlete of the Year Award, but it was his sisters, Taryn and Kirsten, that won the awards in 2011 and 2013. But. Yeah, congrats, Kyle. I know, you know, just from having spent a lot of time in the sports community in Innisfail, that baseball is a major part of the landscape around here. So. To recognize somebody who's competed at such a high level is fantastic and is a pro or, yeah, a product of the system. It's it's amazing. So congratulations, Kyle.
Thank you.
Merrill, keep that safe. I'm sure I'm sure. All right. So here is our grand finale. This is our 2020 Citizen of the Year Award. So this is someone who through volunteerism is an individual who provides distinguished voluntary service and which has a significant impact in the community. Has a minimum of five years continuous voluntary service and has made outstanding contributions to the community, which positively impacts the quality of life in Innisfail. Through his commitment to skills, outreach, support, and leadership. And I think this is something that he does in spades. So I'd like to welcome up our 2020 Citizen of the Year Award winner, Mr. Brent Jackson. I get to tell a little bit about Brent now, too. I'm sure honestly, you guys have all crossed paths with Brent in some respect, but. Just just put it out there. So Brent was born and raised in Innisfail, and he's been an asset to the community, not just as a business owner, but as a longtime volunteer with a variety of organizations. Whether he's connecting with someone to help make their lives better at Jackson Pharmacy. Or setting a track for the Innisfail Nordic Ski Club, or taking a leading role with the Innisfail Ski Club with the Chalet Project that's been happening. Well, it's been a great project in this town. Brent is always willing to make a difference in Innisfail, and his efforts will be felt for a long time to come. A long time volunteer with the Innisfail Ski Hill, Brent has contributed immensely, whether greaming the hill, volunteering behind the rental counter. Serving as president of the Ski Hill Board, so top to bottom, my goodness, that's a lot of roles. Brent serves with a humble heart and prefers to be behind the scenes. That's a direct quote. Brent's efforts help ensure the short and long term future of the Innisfail Ski Hill, which in turn ensures that people who may not otherwise be introduced to the sport of skiing and snowboarding. They get an introduction to it and it becomes such a passion for so many people. Most recently, Brent was instrumental in ways that are beyond explanation for the recent build of the Innisfail Ski Chalet. Serving his time, talents, and resources, Brent and his family have been instrumental in the planning, development, and the construction of this project. We heard him described in the nominations as a general, a leader, and a huge asset to the project. So again, you've got a lot of lot of shoes to fill. My goodness. Brent has and will continue to serve Innisfail through the Innisfail Ski Hill, which is a valuable recreational resource for all members of the community. And then as an individual and business owner, Brent has donated to many worthwhile causes in our community, spreading joy. To those in most vulnerable sectors of our community, including the young and young at heart, Brent quietly and humbly provides support to those in need. As we accepted nominations, we've heard some personal stories that were pretty amazing, but a constant theme was that, you know, he puts the time in. Brent would make himself available after hours to ensure that somebody. Got what they needed, whether it's a prescription or otherwise. We've heard we've got many nominations, just to let you know, and they were from neighbors, from customers, mothers of customers, from lifelong friends. People that volunteered with, yeah, people that have been right there with you. It was it was incredible to read through. Yeah, and they all just wanted to take the time to help us understand the difference. So. Yeah, it's clear that you and your family care about making this community better. So it's amazing to recognize you with the citizen.
Kane, can I just butt in here for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, that's a great little biography on Brent, but there was one item missing off there that I think needs recognition. Because Brent was the visionary for the splash park in town, and he was the project lead on that for the Optimus Club. So I I think that was a very big project that Brent took the initiative and like it was his vision and he brought it to fruition. So. I just wanted, I saw that was missed on there and I thought that should be acknowledged. That was a big, a big project, a lot of work and Brent put a lot of effort into it. So I just wanted to bring that up as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Guess I'll have to take that out of my speech now. It'll take a bit of time, won't it? It's a great honor to be for the Citizen of the Year, kind of unexpected, didn't really expect it. I've grown up and lived here most of my life. I guess it takes a talent to raise a child, and maybe that's what happened. Over time, I've developed hopefully for the best or the better. And it's been a great pleasure helping around the community and hopefully will continue to do so for many years to come. Thank you very much, everyone. So she was my inspiration to the ski part of it. She was the spear of the family and stuff. So. There's pictures of us probably in sixty three, sixty four with this big Innisfail Ski Hill. So. It's nice to have her with her and my wife. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for making the time for us, especially under, you know, very different circumstances than usual. I will let you know that we are accepting nominations for the 2021 awards. So shameless plug in there, but it's always great to recognize amazing people. Feel free to pass word along on that, but otherwise, thank you very much.
Your worship through to Kane or whoever, maybe before the Jacksons go, maybe somebody with could get a photo of the three.
Good point.
Okay, we keep the ball rolling here. Karen Badbury is going to give us a report on the age friendly.
Community.
Okay, so I'm before you today to formally to commit the town. So what I'm bringing before you is the request for decision. To commit the town to formally becoming an age friendly community through the passing of a resolution as outlined by the province of Alberta. And the adoption of bylaws sixteen sixty three dash twenty twenty one to create the age friendly committee for a community committee for adoption. So I'll go down to the background part first. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty, FCSS staff presented to council an administrative review detailing the recommended actions and resources required. To implement the age friendly final report. A couple of the recommendations on the report include. That the town of Innisfail commit to becoming an age friendly community by passing an age friendly resolution. And I believe that resolution might was attached to your packages, I believe. The second one was that the town of Innisfail develop an age friendly community committee. To replace the current age friendly action plan steering committee. In November twenty twenty, a community supports an age friendly facilitator was hired to support the work. Of making Innisfail more age friendly and implementing the above noted actions. So the bylaw outlines the mandate, membership, operation, and duties of the committee. The committee will consist of one counselor, four representatives of the community of community organizations. And two members at large. The committee will be tasked with developing an action plan to explore projects that will advance the eight dimensions of the age of an age friendly. I think that's supposed to be community. So those those are the ones too that the World Health Organization uses. The anticipated outcomes is that an age friendly community is established and acts as a forum and catalyst for community collaboration around the objectives. On making Innisfail more age friendly, the committee will be tasked with developing a community action plan to outline specific tasks and initiatives. To achieve the committee's goals and council strategic goals. The committee will be able to form various subcommittees to work toward different facets of age friendliness. And will act as the connection between council and the and community actions and initiatives. Upon adoption, administration will commence advertising for membership. The service level impacts, right now, the administrative support primarily will come from the community supports an age friendly facilitator as a part of that role. The financial impacts is that administrative support to the age friendly community through staff. And then any budget to support age friendly initiatives and work as identified by the committee and approved through council. So that will be brought back to council. The strategic plan, again, the recommendations align with the town of Innisfail strategic plan in promoting the well being of residents and access to social amenities in Innisfail. So the recommended motions today is that council commit that the town of Innisfail actively participates, supports, promotes, and works to assess. And improve accessibility and inclusion of older persons, persons with disabilities, and the community as a whole. That council grant first, second, and third readings to amend by law sixteen forty six dash twenty. Council procedure by law to remove the age friendly ad hoc committee from Schedule A. And then that council grant first, second, and third reading to the age friendly community committee by law sixteen sixty three dash twenty twenty one as presented.
Okay, someone prepared to make move that we pass that first motion to for the town to support promote. Works of assess and improve accessibility in our town.
Let's move your worship.
Thank you, counselor Harrison. Discussion? No, all in favor of the motion? Carrie, thanks, Karen. Okay, the next is a consideration for first, second, and third reading of the Age Friendly Community Bylaw sixteen sixty three. Dash twenty twenty one. For consideration, would someone like to move, we give this first reading? Awesome. We give it first reading. Okay, thank you, counselor Reber. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Is someone prepared to make a motion move ahead with second reading?
I'll move second reading and I just wanted to make sure that we can do this before the next one because Karen read them the other way around. So.
Thank you.
To resend the ad hoc before we went forward with this or does it doesn't matter? Doesn't matter? Okay.
I think it's good that it confirms that you're wanting to go that way.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. You want to proceed to third and final?
Your worship, I'll move that we proceed to third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Carried. And would someone like to move, we give this third and final?
Yes, your worship, I would make the motion for third and final reading.
All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. All right, the next motion regarding. All right, the next uh, motion regarding the uh, I guess the removal of the ad hoc committee. And this bylaw is sixteen forty-six twenty twenty. Someone prepared to give this first reading?
I'd some of your worship, first reading?
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Second reading?
I move we, we give it second reading?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Reberger. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Someone prepared to make that? Counselor Bates?
Everybody's looking at me. I'll move. Move to third reading of amending bylaw sixteen forty-six twenty.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? One last stand. Someone like to give this third and final?
I will give it third and final reading.
All in favor of the motion? Carrie?
Thank you.
Thanks Karen. Most exercises we've had all day. Okay, let's move on to five point two, three, RFD regarding urban design project award.
Okay, so we're looking to present the evaluation of the downtown area redevelopment plan update, urban design plan and graphics support request for proposal submissions. In the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six economic development plan finalized by council in the fall of twenty twenty. That plan identified strategic objectives of enhancing the downtown, uh, building capacity and promoting the community. Many of the actions identified in the plan are tied to the creation of an urban design plan. An urban design plan will establish a framework for the implementation of many of the quick wins identified in the ECH Dev Plan, including lighting, seating, signage, um, and visual renderings. Uh, the urban design plan and associated update to the down, to the town's downtown ARP will provide an opportunity for public education and input on how improvements and redevelopment occurs moving forward. So the scope of the RFP uh, outlined that the town was looking for a consultant to lead a process that would involve um, a public visioning and design session, um, that would have the, have public engagement to reaffirm the visions and principles identified in the ARP and the economic development plan. Um, and that this should be an interactive event that visually explores opportunities and constraints in the plan area. Uh, the project would also include updates to the downtown ARP policy as well as um, upgrades and enhancements to the current uh, graphics within that document. So the consultant would work collaboratively with town staff to review the existing ARP, uh, including but not limited to traffic patterns, pedestrian connectivity, parking, streetscape design and architecture. They would support staff in identifying policy changes, inconsistencies and opportunities in the document. And that they would create updated mapping and visual renderings to support the concepts identified in the ARP. In addition, the bulk of the project would include creating a downtown urban design plan um, that would clearly guide improvements to the public realm and built form in the downtown. Uh, this would include identifying opportunities for the direct implementation of the twenty twenty economic development strategy, including lighting, seating and improved signage. Uh, it would also create a set of clear design principles and visual renderings to support development permitting and facade improvement program. Um, that's a challenge that we have experienced uh, when reviewing applications and encouraging and ensuring compliance. So the proposals were evaluated uh, based on project team, proposed services, proposal quality, uh, value-added services and price. Ten proposals were received. All of the prices proposed um, by the proponents were within fifteen hundred dollars of the proposed budget of fifty thousand dollars. Urban Systems has been identified as the preferred consultant for this project. Urban Systems' proposal outlines a system-based approach to the project and community development, along with consultation that extends beyond the design scope of the project to support relationships and understanding in the community. The proposal highlights a base understanding of the community and provides extensive opportunities for community conversation. Uh, the proposed methodology and timelines proposed were attached. Uh, the Urban Systems Project Team includes not only design and planning experience, but also economic development, asset management and social planning. The comprehensive nature of the proposal was the primary differentiating factor in a very deep field of submissions. So our anticipated outcomes is to uh, either approve the awards to Urban Systems and move ahead with the project and not approve the contract or direct administration otherwise. Um, this project is within the twenty twenty-one budgeted amount of fifty thousand dollars. And in terms of strategic plan alignment, it lines up with numerous um, items within that document to enhance urban spaces, to attract and support businesses, to attract travelers, um, to enhance community gathering and athletic spaces and to identify and express Innesville's unique culture. So at this time, administration is recommending um, that council award the contract for the downtown area redevelopment plan update and urban design plan to Urban Systems in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Well, I'm uh, certainly open for a motion. If someone would like to move that we go ahead with this uh, recommended motion or recommended statement?
I would move that motion for discussion, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. Discussion?
Your worship, um. I guess I, I'm not sure how to say this exactly. Um. My sense is that the, the plan that we just did with thirteen ways, there's some quick wins in there. Uh, let's take the seating out of that because I don't think that would work right now, but I think we should be doing some of those things without doing another, like we've got, um. Who is it? Roger Brooks and we've got thirteen ways and, and I think there's so much that we could be doing and I think the community is wanting some things done now as opposed to maybe now we're gonna hire somebody else and go through another summer of this. I, I'd personally rather see this take place maybe when we're more through COVID where we can do things in person and, and we can have this interaction like this um, this proposal talks about. Um. I think thirteen ways, there was the twinkle lights, there was events, we could be planning events now for the summer. I know Counselor Harrison brought a couple of weeks ago about, um, you know, something for, for the winter as well and and to me, that's where I would really like to see us focusing our, our efforts right now and whether we talked about through thirteen ways about, um, you know, things like bonfires and fire pits. Uh, we could put those in Centennial Park and farmers markets and all sorts of things and, and I, I don't know. I just don't have a sense right now that the community is going to go, yay, here's another fifty thousand dollars they're spending to do this right now. And it's not that I don't think it needs to be done, it does at some point, but is this actually the right time for it as opposed to kind of doing some of the things that were in the thirteen ways report?
Okay, Counselor Hill.
Your worship, just to Counselor Barkley, just to help me understand a little better. Um, so essentially just seeing some tangible um, actions and something physical that our, our community can engage with and and experience. Is that kind of along the lines of what you're implying?
Yes, your worship through to Counselor Hill. Yes, exactly. I, I think people want to see some things come out of thirteen ways and and you know, there's a lot of good stuff in there and I think we have a lot of assets, human capital assets in this community that we can latch on to and, and get, get some things done. And like I said, I'm not against this, but I, I'm not sure right now is the, the right time and we're still dealing with COVID. We still can't have gatherings and meet in person and do all the things we'd like to do in with community development in this sense and.
Yeah, I, your worship, just to build on that, I, I do agree that um, our community is definitely, well, and like other communities are definitely going to be reaching out for something that uh, they can see, something they could touch, something that they can experience. And I understand there's still restrictions in place and whatever that might look like, but having that uh, maybe those resources put into something that our community can experience would be, would help us heal as a community as well as um, build a little more of that uh, that culture and our, and connectivity within our community as well. So that's just my, my thoughts.
Your worship, I'll give you an example, like maybe even a, you know, there's um, temporary patio programs in, in community. So we, we know that a lot of our eating facilities are restricted because of COVID and, and they don't have the capacity that they normally do. So there's patio programs which can be put outside, even though they're temporary patios, they're, they're out there and, and they can then um, get back up to capacity using outdoor space and and I'm not sure if we would have an uptake of that or not in the community, but I, I would love to, you know, have that on the table or have the town work with, with um, restaurants and, and different places to, to see if that's something that, that they would be open to and, you know, because that creates that, that buzz in town, right? And, and that uh, place to go visit with or make even downtown, it enhances downtown if we had a couple of sidewalk temporary patios and, and stuff like that. So that's kind of my thoughts.
Counselor Bates?
So your worship, I, I can totally understand what the two counselors have said and that people are looking for it's tough if you start to, to look, here's, here's another consultant. The dilemma I would see and administration being in is how do they proceed and what do they pick up? How do we? Do we need to think on this a little bit and? Because it's easy to grab onto one thing that's just been mentioned or, or I don't know how, how you uh, there probably is elements right out of thirteen ways that you could just do. It's hard to know. I'm putting myself in administration's place. Where do, where, where do I start? I guess is a question.
Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, your worship through to Director Jenkins. What do you see is the connect between the thirteen ways document and what we're going to do here is, is it a continuation? Or we're going to reinvent the wheel or just what, for my clarity?
To me, the urban design plan is what's going to tell us how to do those things, the lighting, the seating, the bringing it all together. Um, I know even early on in the thirteen ways process, when the, the twinkle lights conversation came up, you know, we did some research and we started, okay, where are we going to put them? Well, we can put them on these trees or we can put them on those posts or we can put them here, we can make them colorful, we can do all of these things. And it almost seems like, I don't know, painting the room before you do the renovation. That, that that urban design plan will give us sort of an overall structure and approach so that we have a way to do all these things so that they're fitting together and um, aren't sort of random that we don't end up with a, a bunch of random initiatives that don't necessarily tie together and achieve that, that overall. I guess sense of, of place that we're going for.
Sorry, Counselor Harrison, wasn't sure if you're still speaking. Um, just to Director Jenkins. Now, we talked about, and I know that the town has heard the quick wins, that has been something that has been commented on. Chamber of Commerce forums and such like that as well. So there's a lot of people in the town that are essentially wondering when is this quick win going to be installed or whatever it may be. And I can understand that we need to make sure that we, we do it properly. And if that's basically, uh, if this is going to what's being proposed today is the tool that's going to help us advance all of these uh, suggested uh, things in our community, then I can understand that, but I, I do ask if there is something that we would be able to understand that there is a little, I wouldn't say urgency, but an expectation that a quick win would not be something that takes two years to develop. So that's just a, a comment and maybe fellow counselors can uh, put their uh, opinion into that, but yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that we're, uh, we do obviously uh, show our community that we, it was a well worthwhile project with thirteen ways and, and this is the tool that we need to use to implement uh, those actions. That's my, my understanding of it.
Yeah, and I guess in response, um. So at this point, this is the item that, that council had budgeted for as the outcome from that or one of the outcomes from that uh, plan. The timeline for the, the project would be to be wrapping up or at least have a draft by the time um, the next council next fall is budgeting so that then the actual um, action items could be budgeted for um, for your twenty twenty-two uh, year. Because it currently, we don't have any money budgeted for lighting and seating and those things beyond this, this project.
Director Jenkins, and you what I'm, what I'm hearing is that there's uh, maybe uh, things in this, what we're looking at from urban systems or, or whoever the contractor is, there's things that we could probably take out and do ourselves without involving them in a, in the overall concept plan, which can still be followed up at a later date, but it may be, it may change the focus of the, of that uh, if we did twinkle lighting and a few other thing and, and like Counselor Barkley said, some of the special events and that kind of thing, we can make those happen without a a study and, and uh, then re, reevaluate the scope of the study. I, I don't know.
Your worship, I threw to Megan and I guess he, Obeck are like, is it possible for us to have like a visioning session or a get together and talk about some of this stuff and, and um, you know, I, I would highly recommend to recent podcasts that um, Doug Griffiths has done. Uh, one was Harrison Rising and, and the other one was on Raymond. Just um, I don't know when that was, a couple of weeks ago, two or three, go and, you know, sit down, we can kind of say, oh, oh, he's kind of a vision. Is that possible? Can, can we do that with stakeholders in the community, with volunteers? And some of it, maybe yes, some of it maybe no, maybe some of it's crazy, but, but I, I would like to have that opportunity where we can sit together and talk about a vision where we can get some things going now and get some things up and running for the summer and.
Your worship, Counselor Barkley, it's it kind of feels like we're talking two different pieces. As according to Counselor Bates, uh, it is vision, council's vision. So that was established through the thirteen ways strategic plan. One is urban design, that is visionary, that is applying to, to wellness and place and social connection uh, economics, but that is a little bit different than a visioning session that may apply into Counselor Harrison's uh, comments uh, regarding activity and gathering and, and space. But I think there's, there's a, they can be the same, but, but they're truly different from what I'm hearing from this conversation. But you're right, we can spend time, that's what AMP meetings are for, to, to further this dialogue, to maybe go back into that strat plan. And just to, there are some quick wins that are already in play. Um, this one was discussed um, during the budgets and uh, that's why administration advanced, advanced it as a key priority according to the strap plan, but I think yeah. Make sure your vision is captured. I think you should spend a little bit of time before you award a contract. If that's a, if that's what you're hearing and sensing in the community.
So your worship, uh, I guess essentially since I made the initial motion, I would rescind that and potentially um, look at tabling.
I'd recommend um, your worship to, if you don't mind me interjecting, Counselor, go through the process. Um. You may have counselors that, that agree with you, so you're going to get into some messy conversation by guessing who's right, so. I guess just be certain of what's before you go into more resolutions, what, what do you want to do? Do you want to, you can table it as well, or you can decline or whatever. You have some options with this, with your motion, but um, how do you want to proceed, I guess, based on your decisions?
I would let my motion stand and we can go through the due process.
All right, well, we have a motion as to proceed with this. Counselor Reber?
So I think um, I think I would tend to, I think I'd want to go ahead with awarding this and then have So I think um, I think I would tend to, I think I'd wanna go ahead with awarding this and then have, if we could have that engagement amongst ourselves and them right at the start of that process and see what we can, what, what, what we can fast track and what we can, I, I just hate to delay getting this, we're going, like, it's gonna take some time to get this here in time for budget in the fall. It takes time to do all this stuff, especially with COVID, it might take a bit, but I think there's an opportunity to, to do this engagement with them instead of trying to come up with their own plan while we're having them do up a plan for. So my inclination would be to go ahead with this.
Counselor Bates.
So just absorbing as we go along, um, I don't know if we could, if we could uh create some discussion at the next AMP, which would only be one week away and then reconsider this in two weeks, which you wouldn't be just approving it without that discussion. And I, I'm not sure that two weeks would make a huge difference in that. I'd feel a little more comfortable because it's a large amount of money that just that, that we are all in, rowing in the same direction on. But yeah, that's, that's what I would prefer at this point is, is give it a couple of weeks.
To table it or?
Well, I believe Counselor Hill said to let his motion stand to give it due process, which I guess I would be saying I would vote against it for, uh, for today and then uh try and look at uh next week's AMP, it's only weekly. And it, but at least give us that chance to discuss it. And then if we're more comfortable that uh Counselor Reberger's comments he just made just now or where we're headed, then it would be a two-week delay, which wouldn't be huge. That's where my thoughts are.
Yeah, your worship, I, I would agree with Counselor Bates and I'm not sure what happens if this motion was defeated. I, I don't necessarily want this to go away, we just like a little more time, I guess, to kind of talk about some things.
So correct me then, can we not table it till the next regular council meeting? And in the meantime, we had call a get together and, and look through the whole scope of the project and see if there's something we can phase in or, or step in. I don't know, uh, Megan, have you got any?
I guess that's kind of what my question back to council would be is, is there additional information or, or things that you would need or would like to know um prior to having that discussion? To, to help make this decision?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to think of like, if there's some, some doubt or question on, on the necessity of it or all aspects of it or some or because we don't wanna go dead on us, that's for sure.
No, your worship through to Director Jenkins, I, I guess for me, I, I'm trying to look forward and I think, okay, well, we do this and then a year from now there's a, a report that comes out and we're to have, I don't know, just give an example, a one-way street going west down fiftieth and widen the sidewalks so we can accommodate swings and everything. And I'm wondering if we've done, if we haven't done other things, you know, kind of those quick wins, is there an appetite? We just did downtown, I don't know, ten years ago, maybe, ten or twelve years ago, and is there an appetite to kind of, I, I don't know, that the history of Innisfail is redoing sidewalks in the downtown area that uh Counselor Reberger's probably quite familiar with. But um, you know, so I, I guess that's where I'm at is, is trying to figure out what we can do now, what the town can do with stakeholders in this community now. As opposed to looking out and we're doing maybe some very major reconstruction with what comes out of this potentially.
Um, I guess maybe to reiterate what Todd said, I don't think that the, the events and the, the patios and the, those are necessarily held up um because of this project. But this, a lot of those outcomes that, that thirteen ways identified, like the, the graphic renderings and things like that, that, that we kind of need to go through the process in order to achieve. So whether you want to, to pull some, some items out and, and just do them outside of the framework, I guess that's, that's up to council. But I do think there is still definitely value in us going back and revisiting this planet and creating that urban design plan. Even outside of the thirteen ways, we've experienced a lot of times with uncertainty and, and lack of confidence in terms of making development decisions in our downtown where we don't wanna, we don't wanna push for the pretty stuff because we don't wanna scare anybody away and that's sort of counter to what, what that document told us as well. So um, I think by not going through the process, we may be missing that, that opportunity in the longer term.
So your worship through to Director Jenkins, like does Roger Brooks, that, does that document fit in here? Cause I, maybe we can bring that forward to the next AMP because I, I don't think Counselor Harrison would be familiar with that and, cause was that not?
Roger Brooks is, I guess, far less land use focused and more tourism, yeah, make things pretty, make the signs pretty, plant flowers, um, some of that stuff, which is all good stuff too.
Just to add to Roger Brooks, that's correctly, I, I do know there was some criticism, we didn't act on Roger Brooks, which we actually, we did um with this administration. We actually went back to twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, I think that was even before that, Roger Brooks. And actually, we went through administrative process to co-mote actions, we accomplished about ten different actions according to Roger Brooks from straighten out our benches uh to wayfinding. So there's, there's significant eight to ten actions that we achieved that we don't really put a spotlight on. So I think that one has been completed, Roger Brooks, but it is relevant, especially for new counselor. This one is taking those pieces and, and moving it forward to, to urban design, which is, and as we know through the scope of what that means. But yeah, it's um, what I'm, it gets back to process and procedure, so really up to council, so there is a motion, that's for the recommendation. So it's up to council on your kind of your final kind of hearing that, hey, just spend a little bit of time or, no, let's, let's go ahead. So it's really up to you, you can move to the, to approve the motion, move to defeat or, or move to table based on amendment, um, based on your dialogue.
So through to CEO Becker, um, if we folded this down and desire, we brought in uh, same, we, we brought in a bylaw or a procedure saying we can't bring it back within a certain time period, so we'd be better off to re, uh, resend this motion and table it, right? Because I think we'd be fighting ourselves if we didn't do it that way.
Your worship, because uh, Reberger, I don't recall that wording in our procedure bylaw, I know there's some wording in the MGA based on certain bylaw. But you can move to defeat and, and then you can move to bring it back, but it might be cleaner if council's in agreement to, hey, you want a little bit more time on this, you're on agreement to that. Actually, you, that would be, I think you need unanimous for, to table, I believe. So it might be cleaner if you're all in agreement for further dialogue at an AMP, you can look at the same report, we'll bring back the thirteen ways recommendation, anything else that you would want, um, the Roger Brooks report as well. You can take all that, look at an AMP based on how you wish to proceed.
I like that idea better.
Yeah, just another comment, I haven't heard anybody say they wish to defeat this in the long run. So let's just buy ourselves that time and discuss it next week at the AMP and then readdress it in two weeks, is that, are we all in agreement?
With unanimous support, we can table it for till the next regu- regular council. And then we can, even if we wanna have a special committee or of the whole to talk it over before we.
So I think your worship, if, if I, if I'm, I may be corrected, um, I would make the motion that uh I would make an amendment to my existing motion that was overrobed by another motion. That we would table this decision.
You would just move to table your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so you moved to table your original motion.
Yes, your worship, that'd be correct.
Alright.
So yeah, so I would suggest a motion would read a little more specifically that uh, move by Counselor Hill, that council tender the contracts, um, award for the downtown area redevelopment plan. Um, update and the urban design plan. Um, and, and if there's any other direction with that, you could provide that at the same time.
I would move said motion.
Pardon me?
I would move said motion.
Okay.
But I think Todd, you said tender, you meant table?
Oh yeah, I meant table.
Okay, I was a little confused there.
Table the award of the contract. This one got in. My microphone doesn't work anymore, so. So I guess.
We're gonna unplug it.
So I guess what, as per Megan's comments, if, what do you need besides table and likely to come back into next week um AMP? Is there anything further you wish to, to have for information?
No, your worship to the CEO Becker, I think just the, like the thirteen ways document and, and um have that available, maybe the, the Roger Brooks and how that ties in or doesn't tie in. And then um, you know, what, the, the vision from this, right? Like, you're kind of saying this is more of a high-level overview and tying all this in together and, and the, the steps that, that it takes to, to get where we want to go. And what we can pull out of thirteen ways and maybe do sooner rather than later and what can be kind of left to put into this. So that, that's where I'm kind of, I guess, not quite sure where everything fits together.
I could suggest the area redevelopment plan as well, would be pertinent to this dialogue.
Okay. Are we, are we voting on the motion to table or?
Yeah.
Because we're not gonna vote on the original motion. All in favor of the motion to table? Carried unanimously then. Yeah, it'd be nice to get everything fresh in our minds one more time. Okay. Next we have the residential lot pricing.
Okay, so in follow-up from our discussion of residential incentives a few weeks ago, um, we're looking to present some price reductions on the town-owned lots within Napoleon Meadows and Hazelwood. So administration in consultation with the town's listing realtor have reviewed current lot pricing considering market conditions and recent sales. Recommendations for lot price reductions are reflected in the attached maps and would be rolled out through advertising in the coming weeks. So the recommendation is to reduce uh list prices by roughly ten percent uh throughout Napoleon Meadows, resulting in list prices from a hundred and three to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then within Hazelwood uh to reduce the lots from their current list price of ninety-four thousand eight hundred to seventy-nine nine uh GST inclusive. So the reduction in Hazelwood is close to a twenty percent uh price reduction. This is reflective of some of the other uh lot prices that have been put on in uh the Malibu owned lots on Maple Crescent, as well as the conversation with our realtor. Previously with council, it had been brought up whether we should look at incentives on those lots to um, you know, help potential buyers overcome the grading issues or the grading challenges on those lots. And really the feedback from the realtors is, is they haven't had, even had people looking at those lots. So um, at this point, I think, maybe the price reduction will get some people's attention and we can work through um uh some of those design uh challenges. If we get some, if we get some input, um, we will also be doing some new advertising for those lots in Hazelwood uh with the help of Mason Martin Homes to, to do some sort of renderings of what types of houses could be placed on those lots based on what they've uh built on other lots. So hoping that will, will help. So at this point, uh, we're looking for a motion that lot pricing for town-owned lots in Napoleon and Hazelwood be approved as per the uh attached maps to your uh council RFD.
Okay, thank you. Someone prepared to make a motion to that effect.
I will make that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Barkley. Any discussion, have the attached numbers there. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Karen. Okay, uh, an RFD regarding the corporate brand standards and visual identity policy.
Good evening, your worship and council, or afternoon.
Thank you.
Evening, sorry. Uh, just recognizing the uh, the large nature of today's agenda, I'll try and keep this to under uh an hour. Not a very good joke, I appreciate that. Uh, so I will move forward, your worship, uh, sort of in line with uh some of the thirteen ways discussion that uh has taken place tonight. Uh, so presenting for your consideration a corporate brand standards and visual identity policy. Uh, so I'll just walk you through the RFD that I prepared here and as always, feel free to interrupt if you have any questions or, or comments as I go through it. Um, I'll start with a little bit of background, just to refresh your memory on how we arrived at this point. Uh, in February twenty twenty, we did retain services of thirteen ways to develop an economic development plan with intent of working toward and achieving uh strategic priorities. Uh, part of the uh, the scope that we identified as being necessary through that project was the expansion of our existing brand guidelines uh and the assets associated with those guidelines. Um, so provisions to achieve this were included in the overall project scope. Uh, as a result, we did receive, uh, receive rather uh the Innisfail Style Guide, which is attached to Schedule A uh to the policy. Uh, and through that, we've got some provisions for use of the logo, uh, an expanded color palette, uh, some design elements, text and typography, uh, as well as imagery. Just an important note that I've, I've made at the bottom of page one, there's just that uh, this was not a, a rebrand of the municipality's corporate identity, but rather an expansion. Our existing uh document, which is attached uh as I think Schedule B in here, was very limited in nature and, and sort of presented a lot of limitations with how we present and, and market the town. So with that, the expansion saw the uh, we've retained the existing logo, of course, there's nothing's being replaced. Uh, we are just adding some uh new colors and fonts, uh, a few things like that, uh, while also keeping our existing colors and, and fonts as well. So nothing will need to necessarily be replaced, rather moving forward, we'll just be able to um expand some of those uh marketing assets. Along those lines, we are anticipating very few material upfront costs associated with the implant implementation of these expanded guidelines. Uh, for the most part, any new visual components will be introduced gradually, uh, with any resulting necessary replacements to occur within normal life cycling rotation. Uh, however, there are certain instances that we might want to um apply right away or that we can certainly apply right away. Um, we'll be initiating efforts to do so, um, subject to council approval tonight. Things like business cards and, and whatnot, I've listed just as a few examples where um such a sentiment might apply. Uh, in terms of next steps, just uh again, uh, upon receiving approval from council tonight, uh, communication staff, myself and, and Ken will undertake a, a fairly extensive process to uh sit down with members of each municipal department as well as likely council at some point, just to go over the guidelines and, and outline some of those expectations uh or requirements with how, how they're to be used. Um, so I, I do anticipate a bit of a, a lengthy rollout process, however, uh, again, subject to approval tonight, we'll initiate that immediately tomorrow. Just a, a very quick note as well, that uh with the approval of, of this policy, we'll also be able to delve a little bit deeper into some of our marketing efforts. So through the thirteen ways project, we did have some um good provisions in there uh with respect to how we, how we promote the town, uh, to whom we promote the town and uh, and how we reach those folks that we've identified. reach those folks that we've identified as our target markets. So if you flip to the next page, Vanessa, if you could just scroll down to three, just I've provided a very brief summary, just of some of the ongoing projects, very much in line with the discussion tonight, just some of the projects that have resulted from the thirteen ways report. So I won't go through it, it's it's there for your review and certainly open to any questions or discussion you have around it, or if you wish for a little bit more detail on on some of the things that we're working on at the moment. And with all that said, if if there are no concerns, what we'd be asking for tonight is adoption of the corporate brand standards and visual identity policy.
Okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion this time and for discussion purposes?
I still move your worship.
Okay. We adopt the corporate brand standards and Mr. Fullerton has proposed discussion.
Your worship, through to Stuart, wondering where the plaid fits in?
Yeah.
We talked about that before, but.
Certainly, your worship through to Counselor Barkley, yeah, what you see there, and I believe it's within the first few pages of the brand document, Vanessa, if you could scroll down, that's one of the design elements that's been included with some of the assets that we were provided. The intent there was really to expand some of our visual flexibility, I suppose, so moving away from simply solid colors and and whatnot, just a a further means of marketing the town through through some of those various elements. Certainly open to council's feedback if
Like I gave it before, but it's still here. And the only other question like that, some of the photos you have in here, is that going to be used in in our marketing material?
Your worship through to Counselor Barkley, certainly, they can be, however, they're more just for the presentation of this particular report to show some of the color filters and and whatnot that would be added, but they are part of our overall inventory that we can.
I'm assuming there's permission granted from.
I believe so, I believe one of photographers photographers went out, they did, but we would confirm before we.
Yeah, I would just make sure if we were using it further that that we we get confirmation from parents and stuff.
Yeah, by all means, I know that day there were confirmation sign, but you're right, certainly, it's air on the side of caution, just make sure there's no.
And if you could find something a little more modern and cool factor other than plaid, that would be great, but if not, it's okay.
Worship through to Counselor Barkley, isn't Innisfield's heritage Scottish, doesn't Innisfield mean in Gaelic Isle of Destiny? I'm just wondering. That's what I was led to believe, so.
Yeah, your worship.
I think the plaid is very fitting.
Through to Counselor Harrison, yeah, it's a great observation, and I will admit, you're asking the wrong person about that, but I am aware that, yeah, it's Isle of Destiny is the literal translation. The plaid, the tartan that you see, doesn't have any particular significance, from what I understand from the designers, it was rather the colors that fit into it that were deemed most appropriate.
I just want your worship through to Counselor Harrison, I just want to say the aisle fits really well, too, so.
Counselor Bates.
Yes, your worship, so if I if we adopt this, looking at the image that's on the screen right now, that wouldn't fit, right? The the one with the little light sun rays and orange behind the other logo, it would that part would disappear, it would just be the.
Your worship through to Counselor Bates, not necessarily, these colors have been retained as as part of the existing guidelines and assets, so as has the font. So again, what's what's been presented is an expansion, so we now have more fonts to choose from, we now have more colors, but they haven't eliminated the ability for us to use our existing orange, darker orange, so we don't necessarily have to go and replace any signage or anything like that.
Well, what I'm seeing there, though, is is different, a different logo, it actually has superimposed another set of sun rays in behind the other. To me, that's I'm just asking the question that, to me, it's it's been it's been modified.
Yeah, it is a good question, and certainly, these are the things that we are now required to be cognizant of. We do have some flexibility with how we use the logo and and what types of of backgrounds. So you're right, yes, certainly, these are the things that we will review, just to make sure there's that compliance to ensure consistency.
So I'm making myself clear to the others, like the, when I'm seeing, just go right to the very top. All of the pages that have have been presented to us today have that orange banner at the top. Like, seeing it, very top. Or any one of, you can go back to any one of the things that's been presented to us today, it has that orange banner with the light sun ray. Just go right to the top, Vanessa, right to the very top of the the original page. The report had that banner right there has the light orange. It it's kind of like a double logo, it's not what I'm seeing as the logo. So I would assume if I was running a corporation, I wouldn't do that.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
No, no, I think it is a great comment, and certainly, yeah, if if we're to move more closely into alignment with the expanded branding, yeah, you're right, Counselor Bates, by all means, then we would certainly look to.
No, thank you.
More closely, yeah, good comment.
Perhaps a plaid background instead? Any other discussion? Well, I'll ask the question then, all in favor of the motion? Carrie? Thanks, Stuart. RFD regarding sixty-fourth Ave reconstruction.
Or forty-sixth, yeah.
Forty-sixth, when I say.
Yep, so I was just here to present counsel with a recommendation to can to award the construction contractor forty-sixth Ave. A little background, forty-sixth Ave is an older street, has a lot of old infrastructure, ductile iron, the sanitary main is clay tile. There has been a history of a few dug up dig ups along that roadway and as well as the roadway failing. We are proposing to resurface the road similar to what we did last year in 2022, so it will be reconstructed to an asphalt milling state. Tenders were closed in February seven, on February seventeenth, with eleven contractors submitting bids. As you can see, there's a quite a variety of bids or range, lowest bid was 625,000 to the highest bid of 1.6 million. Tender evaluation was completed by Tagish Engineering and didn't see anything that was unbalanced within the bid. Tagish has not worked with this contractor before, but their references all provided positive feedback and with recommendations recommendations to rehire them. Based on this and being low bid, their recommendation is to award the contract to Grayson. Grayson Escavation is based out of La Combe and is a small to medium sized construction company working predominantly in central Alberta. The company incorporated in 2006 and specializes in earth moving, road building, underground utilities, add deep infrastructure. The total project cost is anticipated to be eighty-seven hundred and eight thousand one hundred and fifty-five. This is under the anticipated budget of nine hundred and forty-five thousand. So recommendation is to award the forty-sixth Ave reconstruction project to Grayson Escavating for the contracted price of 625,148 and fifty-eight cents funded from the municipal sustainability initiative for the MSI.
Just a question, Stephen, does that include the overlay the next year?
No, it does not, so the overlay where the the paving would be in the 2022 resurfacing program.
And that's another contract.
Yep.
All right, is someone prepared to make a motion to support that?
I'll move the award this contract as recommended.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Reber. Any further discussion?
Yes, thank you, your worship, just a question through to Director Kennedy, do we have any local companies that are capable of bidding on this kind of contract here in here in Innisfield?
We don't have any deep utility companies, we do have, like, we have some earth moving companies, some gravel supply, some that have died, delved into some smaller servicing type of contracts, but nothing of this type of work.
This magnitude, okay, thank you.
Quite quite often, the these contractors will use our local suppliers and and gravel, you know, materials and stuff locally, but as much as can be, they have the opportunity to bid on it, that's for sure.
Okay, I guess further to that than your worship, is that part of the contract? Like, is there a clause in there that says where possible, use our local gravel guy?
We don't specify that in in the open tender process. I can't tell you, a majority of all the ones that we've typically looked at will use local just because it is usually at a lower price.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Next on is the mill and overlay program for what is that, forty? Is that forty, no, fifty, fifty-first? Is that correct?
Yep, so the mill and overlay, what we did is actually, it's a variety, so we have included one street, Main Street, which would be fifty-first Ave, as well as a number of areas within town that are needing repair, identified for kind of spot repair, so we need to use this program for that. So in 2020, we did do a full re condition assessment of all the roadways within the town as part of the state of infrastructure report. Roads identified in the mill and overlay program were based on having poor rating and also do not require underground utility replacements. Majority of the spot repairs, that's just an added item, are identified just on roadways that will not be in the overlay program in the near future, so it is a way of ex kind of extending the life of those roads. The tender of this project closed on March third, five contractors submitted bids. Central City asphalt was a little bitter in price of 308,717. We had master paving at the high bidder of 453,919. Tender evaluation was completed by Tagish again, didn't see anything that was unbalanced. Tagish has worked with this contractor before with positive success, so based on this and the low bid, is their recommendation to award the contract to Central City. Central City also did the sixty-first Ave last year with the good success for the town, so total project cost with engineering and contingency is 384,520 and twenty cents. This is under under the anticipated budget of 500,000. So a recommendation is the council awards the 2021 Mill and Overlay Program to Central City for the contracted price of 308,717 and forty-five cents funded from the MSI and federal gas tax.
Okay, is there a motion to support that?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Barkley. Any further discussion? I'll ask the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And you want to buy some equipment?
I like spend lots of money, so. So, yeah, thirdly, we do our, we did go for a request for quote on the articulating tractor for replacement, so this is a replacement of the 2010 tractor unit that we had. This unit has been seeing an increased servicing and repairs over the last three years totaling about 20 services and repair since 2018. This unit's been used for mowing, power brooming in the summer, snow clearing of sidewalks, parking lots and trails, and sanding during the winter. Request for quotes closed on February 21st with three submissions. All three units were evaluated in regards to mainly cab size, power and attachment availability. The lowest or best valued cost, I guess, in regards to this is the MV four point one tractor had a number of attachments that were looked at as a benefit, as well as a bonus attachment, which was the broom flare mower. We were able to add that to the unit and remain under budget, so administration is recommending to proceed with the purchase of the MV four point one municipal tractor for the total purchase price of 104, 189,730 dollars. Just looking at for council to approve the purchase of the articulating all season tractor with accessories from Cubix Limited for the price of 189,730 dollars to be funded from the Public Works Equipment Reserve.
The appears it's certainly more more equipment to it, when they guys, she's got a boom arm fail mower, I don't think we've ever had one of those.
We have not. Yeah, so it will have definitely that attachment, as well as they were able to take the trade in, so we don't have to take it to auction either, so that was another bonus.
Can you, someone prepared to make a motion to support this?
Worship, I'll move the recommended action.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie? One question for you, Stephen, before you run away, I know you're not gonna run away, but Fortieth Street was done a number of years ago and and they just they just did a scratch of the surface. Now, was that, I thought it was meant to be an overlay on Fortieth Street from from Fifty Second to no?
I think it was a chip overlay.
Oh, okay, yep.
But it's it wasn't overlay, was it?
Well, it was, it was a, yeah, no, it was a, it was a kind of a rough chip overlay, and then when we did this one here, we went with the West Can one, which was the smooth overlay, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, if you ride your bike on it, it's a rough road.
Well, I, that's, you know, I I guess I you probably would have heard of me sooner when I did live on Fortieth Street, I would have. But I wouldn't, that's the last thing I'd want somebody to come along and do that to my front.
Well, your worship, I can tell you that Forty-Fifth Street is the same way.
Yeah. Forty-fifth?
Yeah, 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 it's been like that, I have to be, I don't know, probably eight years now, it was just a chip overlay that was done and it's
A chip overlay.
Or whatever, I don't know what you call it, but.
I mean, it's
It's rough.
Somebody just took a rake and raked it.
Yeah, there was actually a petition going around the the neighborhood, a neighbor related somewhat to our receptionists somehow, but there was a, he was like getting signatures from the neighborhood like seven or eight years ago to try to get it finished, because we were always under the impression it was going to be finished to a smooth surface and it was always left. Now, this chip overlay.
It really is substandard.
Chip seal overlays typically are done in the county, county roads, they're country residential, they're typically done in town. Microsurfacing is definitely more popular. But, yeah, typically chip chip seal overlays, I know they were big about eight, 10 years ago, because you can do a lot more for a, they're a lot cheaper price.
I think if any of us here had a brand new house sitting, it's the last thing you'd want is that kind of a street in front of it, and I I don't look at these older sections any less valuable and and to the owners and anywhere else in town, so.
And I'm pretty sure that wasn't the last council, it was the one before that approved those.
It must have been. Certainly wasn't when I was on council. Anyways, moving on. Correspondents. Did you, everybody follow up on? Did you, everybody follow up on our reply to our letter?
So your worship, item number five is coming up again.
Yes.
I'm wondering, I think the last time we spoke about this, well, there was a motion passed to keep it like it is, and now it's back again. So obviously, things are not working. And I guess I look at that site and there's never going to be enough parking on their property. So are we going to, I know we think at one point in time, we were sending Director Kennedy over to have a chat and see where, how things could be worked out, but what, what are your thoughts on this CEO background?
Your worship, it's Council Barkley. So right now, I'm working with bylaw is council reviewed two hour parking. I think it was before Counselor Harrison's time, I believe, right before Counselor Harrison came on board. And council reviewed to our parking zones and I don't think, believe there's any adjustments to those zones. One was, so Nick Bell represents Darkwoods Brewing in Napa, basically same area. And so in working with bylaw is council set that expectation that they confirm the bylaw will be, it's enforced. So there's two hour parking, then it'll be two hour parking. So what's in engagement with bylaw and then with Darkwoods is that we're not feeling the pressure to maintain to our parking at this given time. So in talking to, to the manager, onto his staff, that perhaps council may want to revisit to our parking in that zone based on, even on the information that Mr. Bell provided in his letter. I think there's room for council to have that conversation. Perhaps we could bring back that area and the bylaw associated and you can confirm either the bylaw is, is in good, good order or make adjustments. But right now enforcement feels or council may want to revisit that area.
So your worship, through to CEO Becker, maybe you could kind of enlighten Counselor Harrison because I, you're right, I don't think he was here at the time, but I think all the two hour parking was taken out all around the area with the exception of in front of
Maintained.
It was maintained. Okay, sorry, can't remember all the details anymore, but but the two hour park, does it go in front of the DNR as well? So it's all along there, yeah.
Sure. So I can give a little, I made some notes just in regards to, so it was in April of last year that we did a review of all the parking, the two hour parking within Innesville. We did look at that one specifically. We, we did look at moving forward with improving the signage, because the signage was very unclear, as well as we did the recommendation to maintain the parking. This would allow for turnaround of customers and opportunities for RP parking because that is very limited in that area. And that was the two recommendations we put forward. Looking, I guess, again at this area, we did look at there is other areas for parking nearby. If, if the concern is for his employee, very close by, if that's, that isn't two hour parking. As well as businesses are, kind of a note I had here, businesses, businesses are responsible for their own employee parking as well as customer parking at time of development. So I believe this was two hour parking when they developed and built and knew the area.
It was, yeah. I think, you know, my seems like my history or relating to that situation, it's usually two hour parking is, is requested by the businesses because people are, you know, bringing the tractor trailer or anything along there and park it and leave it sit there all day and then their customers have no place to park. And we, and it used to be substantially quite a bit of that on, not to request of the businesses, but I mean, I can't. Well, because he's looking at it for staff parking, that's one thing. But as a business owner, I guess he doesn't feel that that blocking that parking off along the service road there is a detriment if you don't, you know. But I, that's to me, it's, if the, if the business is along their request.
Yeah.
I don't want it, I can't, I can't see why we would do it. It's no benefit to us, two hours or eight hours or but it's, it will have an impact on the local people.
Yeah, I would think, I don't know whether you want to have a conversation or if this is the conversation, but you know, you drive by or you go there and there's always vehicles parked along that two hour parking. And I know, you know, there may be a meeting, I've been to meetings in there where it's gone over two hours and, and so you know, if I, I think if they're requesting to revisit this, then we should take a look at it. And because you're never going to get the vehicles on, on their, on their property, there's not enough space, so.
Your worship, I, and I, I do agree that obviously prior to Darkwoods being built, that the nature of the business of Napa was, you know, in and out, grab your parts, leave. Now, obviously, the, the use of that area has changed immensely and yeah, and I think that obviously that a two hour, whether it's a meeting or whatever else you're doing there, whether they're renting the upstairs or whatever it may be. I, I don't think that the two hour parking really complements that business very well. And if that's something that's being brought up at this time due to the, the demand changing, I can, I can understand the, the request. And I, I wouldn't want to stand in the way of, of business, but the other question that was always posed to me was if we're going to have two hour parking, who's enforcing it? And if there's no enforcement of it, then, then why are the signs, are they, are they really necessary? And, and that's just a question that's brought to the table.
Counselor B.
Well, I guess the question comes to my mind is you know, want to listen to the business. How many businesses exactly along there does this affect? And how many parking spaces are there for two hour? And perhaps we should consider reducing the number of two hour somewhat find a compromise that works for people. I don't, those are what, those are the thoughts that go through my mind. I don't know how many there there, like, are there ten, are there two, three? And, and I, I assume DNR and, and Napa and, and Darkwoods are the businesses that are right there. But I don't think anybody overflows down there from home hardware. They've got their own, they got lots of room. So I don't know if we could just ask some of the businesses what their personal situation is and maybe we could find some kind of a compromise that works.
Well, I think what we want to do is cooperate with the local businesses as much as we can. But couldn't Mr. CEO, could we not have you or your staff or somebody to go over and just survey the three businesses and get their input? I think that's what Counselor Bates was getting at.
If that's what council's wishes are, we didn't want to assume. You just reviewed this eight months ago, whatever. So if you want us to reevaluate to our parking or specifically to our parking in this area, we can certainly do that based on your direction.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea to talk. I, I think part of the problem, if you look at home hardware, they have their own staff parking. The problem is Napa, Darkwoods don't have any designated staff parking. So their parking is in front of their businesses. So I, if they want to take away the two hour parking, I think that's probably a good idea. But I certainly would, would think they shouldn't be parking their staff in there if you're trying to bring people to your business. So I mean, they, I think they need to find a solution where they're parking there. Because I know there was an issue with the Napa staff parking and the home hardware staff parking. So I mean, you know, there's, got to work with your neighbors too.
My, my experience, your worship, with our parking is that it's to control staff where they park. It's, it's not alone to, to Innesville.
Do we need a motion or anything?
If there's direction, yes, please.
Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we direct administration to meet with, I guess, the affected business owners in that two hour parking area along Fiftieth Street, like just that area, not review all of two hour parking in this fail, just this one specific area as per this letter.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thanks, Counselor Barkley. Anything else from those correspondents? Well, if not, would someone like to move, we accept those correspondents for information?
I'd still move your worship that we accept correspondence and information for information.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Okay, council reports.
Counselor. Thank you, your worship. I had a couple of comments about the outdoor rinks. We haven't really been keeping them up, but that's okay. Told them not to switch to field hockey, but anyways, I know I'm just more or less a joke. But I did have, just to bring counsel to just provide some information to counsel. I've always prided myself in being fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' dollars and take my responsibilities as counselor very serious. And after it was made quite clear through Sage Analytics Code of Conduct Investigation that they spent about approximately fifteen percent of their time and resources investigating myself. I felt it was only appropriate to reimburse the, the town for the fifteen percent that was spent investigating myself and there really isn't much more I have to add to my around the table discussion. Just wanted to bring counsel as well as administration just up to speed with that.
Well, it's interesting concept, I I'd be interested to hear a bit of a straw vote if we feel that I mean, you're insisting to do this or just
Your worship, the, the, the funds have already been given to the town. So it's already been received and that is, it's done already.
Well, it's okay, thank you.
No, I wasn't going to call me, I was getting ready for the next.
Well, I, I, okay. Thank you, Counselor Hill for your input. Counselor Bates.
So I attended MPC and Emergency Management Zooms. And I had a citizen give me an old economic development brochure that I've passed to the CEO. And he's gonna try and get it produced in a way we can all look at it. It's just interesting to see what's changed and what hasn't since two thousand and six. And yeah, I just, so when you see it come as an email or whatever, you know where it came from. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
I had MPC and Emergency Management Committee meeting also sat in on the North Area Structure Plan presentation that Craig Teal did last week. And I didn't mention last week, but the week before that was a panelist along with Jamie Hussain and David Pachard, who are with Elemental Energy and GP Jewel and did a presentation through Solar Alberta. There was about two hundred and twenty five plus participants listening to that. And now there was municipality from up north, I believe, First Nations community that, that reached out and wanted some more information. And they've been connected with Megan. So thank you very much, Director Jenkins, for looking after that. So yeah, and I think that's it for now.
So I attended the, or I zoomed in on the North Area Structure Plan and I attended the Emergency Management Committee meeting.
Thank you, your worship. I attended the Emergency Management Meeting also, but I noted that I'm not on the committee, so it's just an information meeting. It was, it was very good. Gary gave out a lot of, a lot of good advice. However, I did get out of that, I did get it registered for the municipal elected officials training. That link has come through now. I'm just waiting to get the course materials. I guess it takes two to three days for them to, to do their, do their thing. That's the email I got this morning. So I'd just like to comment on Counselor Hill's comments around reimbursing the town. I, you know, I think that's an honorable thing, but I, I like to say that we're all honor, like fiscally responsible. And you know, that investigation was done as a vote of all of council, it was endorsed by all of council. We, we chose the investigator that we felt could do the job for us in a fiscally responsible way. So Counselor Hill has his reasons why he's doing it. And I certainly can't or won't question his motives. But for, for whatever, I think it's quite honorable that you've decided to, to do that. So I I'll leave it there, your worship.
Okay. Counselor Barkley, did you have a point?
No.
Oh, sorry. All right. Yeah, I've been basically attend, was in on the safety Zoom there and it was very, very informative, but I have to apologize, I didn't make the North Area Structure one, but any, anything come of it, Megan, that was outstanding or?
Um, I guess the first night it was predominantly staff and counselors. But the second night we did, I think we had six landowners and, and one just sort of general observer. So no, there were some, definitely some good questions and I know that PCPS has had direct conversations with, with most of the landowners. So it's been a good process and ensuring that they all understand what the document means and what it may mean for, for their properties. So I believe people have until March the twelfth to submit any further comments or feedback. And then we'll be looking to see a draft probably early April.
With their, was their landowner represent, representation from all of the?
Um, not quite all of them. Yeah, we had, I guess we had Ian Stewart, we had Discovery Wildlife Park, we had Wagers representative of a couple of the members of the Wagers family.
Dodds?
Dodds were not on, but we had Greenwood.
Greenwood were?
Yep.
Good.
Yeah, so it was, again, yeah, Melkor was on the first night. So I think it was well covered for those expansion lands.
Good. That's good. Okay.
Your worship, I kind of missed one. So yeah, I was also on that first engagement. And I guess to Vanessa, I never did get registered for the for that, but one that, and, and I am on the committee. Thank you.
Okay, well, quickly do the open mic. Stephen, I got everything covered?
No, I think I spent enough money. So I'm good. I spent enough money, I'm good.
Director Wymark? No? Megan, have you got anything else?
Uh, no, just thank you to council. It looks like we are, it looks like everyone can attend on the twenty third for the conversation with H C M A on the results from the Aquatic Center Multiplex Survey. So that should be a good conversation.
Okay. Again, anything you want to join in on? Okay, Johnny, have you got anything for us? Stuart? Got everything covered? Vanessa? Good. CEO Becker. Okay. Well, I'd entertain a motion then. Well, we've got some upcoming events to prove there. But other than that, I would entertain a motion to go in camera.
I'll just mention that there are two RDR mug meetings. Or did we miss the open mic?
There's nobody here.
Okay, so just mentioned there's two RDR mug meetings on the eighteenth. And then I'll move that we move in camera. And then I'll move that we move in camera.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Take a couple of minutes break. Get some water.